Waiting for the graphics to catch up, but I will call to order the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority for June 1st, 2010. May we have a roll call for the council, please?
Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman, Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarion.
Here.
May we have a roll call for the housing authority?
Authority members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman, Mincy.
Here.
Najarion.
Here.
Rozian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Sheriff Quintero. Here. May we have your report?
Agenda for the June 1st, 2010, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority was postponed on Thursday, May 27, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. And today, the meeting before you is regarding Director of Community Services and Parks regarding Pacific Pool project. And 1A is council resolution adopting specification number 3423 for construction of the project and directing city clerk to advertise for bids.
Thank you. Mr. Chapchan.
Thank you, Mayor Najarion, members of City Council, and members of the Housing Authority. As you know, back in January, we came to you with a design development for the Pacific Pool. You approved us going out and starting the construction drawings. We are now finished with the construction documents and specs for the Pacific Pool project. The pool design, as you can see, is an L-shaped pool with six swim lanes. The shallow portion of the pool is between two to four feet. The deep end of the pool ranges from four feet to 10 feet, and accommodates a recreation diving board on one side of that. Based on feedback from the City Council, when we brought this to you back in January, you asked that the pool building be reduced in size, and we did that. Three-quarters of the building is dedicated to public use and/or storage, so majority of the building is for public use. The entire facility will be ADA compliant. The project will achieve LEED Silver certification, and very likely that we will get Gold LEED certification at this point without any additional cost to us, but we're still working on that, and I think there's an 80 to 85 percent chance that we'll be able to attain that. This is currently a $6 million project. We have $5.3 million remaining for the construction phase of it. If approved today, we would bid and award this project in three months by August, begin construction in August 2010, and hopefully, we're shooting for completion of this project in June 2011, just in time for the summer months, so the kids and the community can could enjoy this. One of the questions you had when we came before you back in January was operational expenses. Where were we going to get that money? We looked at, the Maryland Mini Park had $1 million. There's $950,000 left in that. Some of that was used for design work for the Maryland Mini Park. There is $950,000 that we can use over the span of three years to cover the summer operational costs for the pool. We are currently, we've gone through, we have passed the Phase 1 of the Prop 84 grant cycle, so we are in that mix for Maryland Mini Park. We're applying for $1.8 million from Maryland from Prop 84 state funds, and I think we have a good chance of getting that. If not, then we can use CDBG money for the Maryland Mini Park pool. So pulling the general fund money from the Maryland Mini Park for operational costs is one option to operate the pools once we build it. With that, staff is available for questions from City Council. I'll just open it up for questions at this point.
Mr. Quintero.
Well, I don't have any questions, but I want to say what a happy day this is for me. I'm really, really pleased that we've reached sort of last stage of a very long process. And I want to start by talking about the different people that have worked on this project throughout the years, starting with Justa Ron, who's sort of the Wizard of Wall Street in terms of putting the monies together to get this accomplished. And it's taken a number of years, multiple funding sources, as we, as mentioned in the report. And then, as usual, Dave Ahern did a great job of bringing the project together. And finally, you, Mr. Chapchan, I appreciate all your support in doing this, but all of the residents in that section of Glendale and the rest of Glendale, because I think this is going to be a destination point. They're all going to be very, very happy with this modern, updated pool and pool facility, so another sort of pearl in the Glendale Parks Department, so thank you very much.
Mr. Draymond.
Mr. Mayor, I am likewise extremely happy about the progress on this project. I think you should be extremely happy with the fact that something that you've been working on and promising and spearheading and championing in this community for years now is about to take this big step. I remember very clearly a day, a couple summers ago, when we sat down at Pacific Edison, very hot summer day. It was literally one of those, you could fry an egg on the sidewalk days. And yet, we were out touring the site, and it hasn't stopped from there. Clearly, it is, it may not be the exact project that, in terms of scope, that we had maybe considered if we had our ultimate wish list, but what it is, is a great community facility, recreational facility, a part of a city where we desperately need recreational facilities. And to me, the plus is, I mean, to me, the greatest use for this is going to be neighbors in the most impacted part of our city having a place where they can show up with their children and their grandchildren and cool off on a summer day. The added benefit, if you will, is the fact that we have some additional uses for it in terms of classes and training and other things that we were able to salvage and maintain in this project. The missing element, I think, was what Mr. Chapchan was referring to, and that is how do you move forward with the maintenance and operation. And we've been through the wringer on this whole project. Would the money from the state be there? How would, and would it, you know, would it come through? So it is a very great day. It's terrific. It's, I'm very glad to be part of this council at this time, to be a part of this. And I know, I know how important this is to you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm also happy to support you on this.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver.
Well, there's no doubt that that neck of the woods needs a swimming pool. I remember when we were planning the Pacific Edison complex. First, I didn't realize until it was built, there was going to be so much bright concrete exposed out there during the summer, which is, really bakes the whole area, and it's, so it's greatly needed down there. And, but I have to be consistent with what I've said in the past. They need this swimming pool down here, but my responsibility, in my own mind, is to balance my fiscal responsibilities with the needed community in a recessionary period. While there's apparently maintenance money for the first couple of years been found, we're talking about at least a half a million probably infinitum years out. I don't know where we're going to be in a year or two financially to guarantee we're going to box in a half a million dollars every year, then on. I'm not prepared at this moment to say that that's where the money ought to go. I supported the project up to now. I said I would support it up to this point, but I would vote against construction in 2010. On the clear, need a pool there, but I'm concerned where the money is in the future. Something's going to have to give after the first couple of years. What's going to be the trade-off? Police, fire, or the pool? I know that pool that was there, people said it shouldn't have been removed, but I think it was cracked and broken beyond repair. It had to come out, and we wouldn't have the baseball fields there if we had not taken the pool out because of the rearrangement. So yes, it's a great idea, but it's the wrong year in my mind. So again, I know I'm standing alone. I won't have to worry about this. No vote. It will be built. Thank you.
Thank you. I just would like to, Mr. Chapchan.
And this would be an enhancement of services at this point, because we still have the pools available at the high schools, so we do operate those in the summertime as well. And what we're seeing right now is almost a 30 percent reduction in the bids for our projects, so we do save some money at this time for the construction of the project. So it's a trade-off, I think, with bad times, but good bids at this point.
I agree with that. You will get good bids. Okay. I just want to say, it has, certainly has been a challenge. This project has faced quite a few challenges along the way. And, you know, I think the concept of having a pool in Glendale, a municipal pool, probably goes back to at least 10 years, when I was taking my oldest son, I think it was five, to the Glendale Gators Swim Program, and that's where I met Courtney Maglio. And we talked, because the kids would have to leave because the high school was coming in for their water polo and all that. And, you know, I said to myself, why don't we have a pool for our kids to use more often and more frequently? And it went from there. You know, my first, I was pretty clear, my first choice would have been to have a larger aquatic complex with a 50-meter pool with diving wells, et cetera. The financial constraints of that type of project have led us to pare this project down to the six-lane pool that we see, but nonetheless, I think it will serve a great use in the community. We can have, we can have many, many different types of programming. And not only will children be learning how to swim in this pool, but perhaps our Parks Department will learn the particular intricacies of making a successful programming plan where we are not running into the $300,000, $400,000 deficits that it looks like we may have to run to operate the pool. And that's, I think, going to be based on the huge demand that we're going to have for this pool. Some are skeptics, I know, but if we were all skeptical, probably not a shovel of dirt would be overturned. There are many, many uses for a pool. I have personally seen people lining up outside the Rose Bowl at 4:00 AM, and I've seen them thrown out at midnight. And these are people who are willing to pay for the pool. These aren't just, you know, your kids who want to pay a dollar or two and get in, but the, but the master swimmers, water polo players, and these people pay a significant amount for a facility fee, much more than a baseball diamond or anything like that. So I'm confident that as we get the sense and we realize the demand, both within our community and within the region for our pool, that we'll be able to put in a lot of productive and cost-wise programs that will help defray some of those expenses. And it will be a learning experience as we learn and see who's interested and how much people are willing to pay, outside of the, you know, the children in the neighborhood who are seeking relief from 105-degree heat. So it will be a learning experience for all of us. And my dream of an aquatic complex is not gone. I'm hoping that this isn't merely going to, shall we say, whet the appetite for those people who never really thought about using a swimming pool, but would be willing to support and use a larger facility, perhaps in another location in the city when the time comes and when funds become available. But I thank you, George, and staff for going through the different iterations that we've had. We've had a few rocky meetings, and even though I blamed a lot of that on Mr. Ahern, probably wasn't all his fault. He was, he was the one standing at the podium, perhaps, at that moment. So I apologize for my harsh looks at you in some of the earlier meetings, Dave. I know you're doing your best to make this a reality, and what we have is really something to be proud of, I think, for the community, and it serves a neighborhood that's vastly underserved in terms of recreational facilities. I'm happy. I can't wait for it to be built, and the eight- or nine-month construction timeline that you're suggesting is very exciting. So next summer, the kids could be splashing around, which I think would be great.
You know, money losers, but we have some really good staff, and staff who have over 20 years of experience among them in pool operations, so we'll be able to ferret out what loses money and what can make us some money. For example, the Pacific Community Center, we make over $112,000 a year in revenue from that, so we'll figure out a way to make money if we can.
I'm sure it'll be, it'll take a while to adjust to the likes and tastes of the community, so.
Speaker card for this?
Yes, there is. There's a card from Mr. Mike Mohill.
Mayor Najarion, Mike Mohill, long-term resident of Glendale. It makes me feel good, cockles my heart, as they would say, to hear everybody here talking about how great it is to have a swimming pool at Pacific Park. You're concerned about the kids, the hot summers, and the poor people, they need a place to go. You made a comment. My question is, why has it taken seven years for this pool to be built? If it's been that important to the community and to the City Council, why seven years? Another point is, when I look at Pacific Pool, I also compare this to Rock Haven. Mr. Draymond was elected in 2007, and eight months later, Rock Haven was approved for over $8 million for a few hundred people to use with no purpose yet, sir. Where are the thousands of kids going to use swimming in that Rock Haven sanitarium place? I keep looking in the paper, what are we going to do with this white elephant? I'm sorry to use that word, but the city has invested. And then I looked at the budget for 2010, another $1.2 million for Rock Haven. And again, I read nothing in the paper, nothing from council, what they're going to do with Rock Haven. Who speaks for Rock Haven? Who speaks for the Pacific Pool? Chevy Chase Country Club has a beautiful swimming pool and a golf course, no less. And nobody here on council ever suggested that we purchase the Chevy Chase Country Club. It was just sold for about $3 million. $8 million for Rock Haven, $6 million for a Pacific Pool? We could have a country club. Why are the people who live up in the Chevy Chase Hills are special? That's a golf course, nine holes, a swimming pool, banquet room, but we don't have money to find that? We had an opportunity, you know, when the reservoir had to be fixed here a year and a half ago, we had to pay the owners of the Chevy Chase Golf Course business interruption money. And then when the Range Can had to pay them more money. Had we owned the country club, we would have to pay anybody anything because we owned it. We're like a renter there, it seems like to me. So who represents the people of Chevy Chase Canyon? I think all five councilmen do. Could you make sure that the Chevy Chase Country Club stays private? They don't get any traffic, of course not. I live up in Glen Oaks Canyon, right, Mr. Weaver? And we get all the traffic every day up to the golf and the tennis up there. But that's okay for Glen Oaks Canyon, but not for Chevy Chase. What makes those people special? Thank you, Mr. Mohill.
Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, we have our golf course, our public golf course. We certainly don't need two golf courses in two adjacent canyons in the east part of Glendale. And as far as I can tell, Chevy Chase Country Club would be a financial loser for the city. And if the city tried to do anything in there, the residents would come out of the walls opposing anything that we tried to do other than leave it exactly the way it is as a money loser. As far as Rock Haven, one day, because I didn't even know what Rock Haven was, Mr. Draymond called me, wanted me to go up with him and take a look at it, which I did. And based on what I saw, I was ready to buy it. It's an investment. I saw a library going in there. I saw, in my own mind, I saw back area that could be opened up for weddings and parties, whatever. It's all cleared and redeveloped. I could see parking structure underground there for the people to use the library. And who else, what else could have gone in there? There's some historic buildings that should be kept and can be used. It had a lot of public purpose in its acquisition, and a parcel of land that large, you're just not going to find every day. So I thought it was a great investment. Even if you talk, where's the library? Well, gee, when are we going to find the money? Got to have the money before you can do anything. If you can develop it as a recreational site for people to have parties, oh, gee, where's the money? You know, we're in recessionary times. I just voted against a pool that I think is great because I think financially it's wrong. And the same thing, Rock Haven, where's the money? We're going to have to wait till the economy turns around before we start talking about developing Rock Haven. But that was an absolutely great investment, much better than some of the open space acquisitions that we acquired, which we did not, would not have had to pay for if limited amount of housing had been put in. We could have saved 20, 30 million dollars, is my guess, but that's just my own personal opinion. So I just thank you, Mr. Draymond, for taking me up there, showing it to me. It'll be a great, it'll be a great location one of these days when we get it done. Plus, we have a well up there now.
That's true.
We're getting water.
If there are no other comments, I'll move. Mr. Draymond, go ahead.
I've remained largely silent as Mr. Mohill has continued with his non-factual claptrap. You can bring that up tonight. I'll say it again, non-factual claptrap about Rock Haven. No, you may not have read about it in the newspaper, but clearly you also haven't been reading our own minutes and agendized items regarding Rock Haven. It was purchased for a specific reason, not just willy-nilly. First of all, this council purchased that site as the site for the new Montrose Branch Library. That will be the site unless some future council changes their mind. That's what we voted to do, and that for the, for the open portion, the vacant portion of that site, which is a three-and-a-half acre site that costs the city about $50 a foot, which is a bargain, as your superhero, Mr. Yusefian, used to say, "Show me any property in the city at that rate, and I'll vote to buy it." And he voted to buy this one as well. Also, remember that the reason the Montrose Library was going to go there is because it is the busiest branch library in the entire Glendale system, and not by a few visits or a few books, but by thousands of visits and thousands of books checked out. Further, the reason this council chose to purchase that site is because it is a historic site, which only goes to show, Mr. Mohill, that you don't know much about the Chrysina Valley or its history. It was settled for its sanitariums. Chrysina Valley was deemed in national press in its inception as the cleanest air in the country, and so sanitariums rang up all over the area, 28 of them or so. The only one still remaining was Rock Haven Sanitarium, which has a tremendous history. And so it was a thought that it should be evaluated as a historic site as well, and it has been. Thirdly, we saved money by purchasing Rock Haven, because when I came to this council in 2007, my very first taste of a budget session was that the city was going to build a new fire station on the site where, oh my goodness, Trader Joe's is going now, to the tune of more than $17.5 million. And the plan was to build a new fire station and expand a library. And all of that totaled up to well over $23 million. Instead, the plan became, not just because of me, but because of consideration by the City Council at the time, the purchase of Rock Haven Sanitarium as the future height, a site of the Montrose Branch Library, to eventually rebuild the fire station on the existing footprint, taking over the space that is now the library, and to offer a ground lease for a retail anchor for the Montrose Business District, which is Trader Joe's. So we have a quarter million dollar, roughly, a year revenue that will be spent on the area. And as Mr. Weaver pointed out, we struck water on the Rock Haven site, and it will be a well that will be servicing the, not only the Rock Haven site's needs for irrigation in the future, but also the community, the Glendale community at large. These are all very good and sound reasons to have made those moves. The fact that you're not up on the history of it or the development of it, if you'd like to pick up a phone and set an appointment, I'd be happy to talk to you about it, at a date after I get my voice back. So anyway, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but I keep getting pulled into the conversation, so I'll start at the beginning. In terms of the old pool, I made an appearance in front of the City Council on a Tuesday to plead, this was before I was elected, obviously, to plead with them to leave that pool in. I attended all of the different meetings that were held, the community meetings. And that weekend, I remember counting, I believe it was on a Saturday, I counted 98 people using the pool. Lot of mothers and children and younger people. The next day, on a Sunday, over 100. And so anyway, we should have kept the pool. We could have kept the ball diamond. It needed some upgrading, and we should have kept the pool. So for seven years, instead, we built a tremendous project. I mean, it's just used constantly. Basketball courts, baseball, soccer, basketball courts in and out, the meeting space, the library, it's a tremendous project. So unfortunately, the residents, for approximately seven years or more, haven't had a pool, but they will have a very much of an upgraded pool, so it's going to far surpass what was there years ago. So in the end, it worked out for the neighborhood. Then on the issue of Rock Haven and open space, I'm on record, but I want to reiterate once again that any opportunity that this city has to purchase either open space or space for parks, developed parks, it's a mistake if we don't take it, regardless of the geographic location. I mean, people in South Glendale have cars, they ride buses, et cetera. Verdugo Park, Brand Park, they're not just used by local residents, they're obviously used by residents who live in the southern portion of the city. So both recreational facilities, using the different high schools for dual and, well, Glendale Unified School District properties, using them for dual use and purchasing mini parks and doing everything we can to purchase park space makes a lot of sense regardless of the cost. It's cheap by comparison with not doing anything.
So I'm ready to move 1A. I move the resolution 1A. Mr. Howard.
You're the chair, actually, so.
For the City Council.
It's a council.
Council resolution.
Council resolution. So who has the second?
I have the second. I'll move the item then.
Okay.
Roll call, please. Mr. Howard. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it will be a resolution as modified. Director of Parks can go into detail if you'd like, but there are some minor technical details, such as, I think, a permit from county we're still working on to include in the specs. So we've added a sentence to paragraph one to authorize the Director of Community Services and Parks to make minor technical changes before the specifications are released.
That would relate to.
I'll move with those specifications included. I will, you second.
I will, I will go ahead and be second. And I assume those technical specifications. I assume those technical specifications, whether there's a language, swimsuits optional.
That you'll have to check with the Director of Community Services and Parks.
We'll talk to the printer.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Strayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
No.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn for council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn for the housing.
So moved.
Second.
We have one more.